To everyone, a notification of no votes were taken in executive session. I consider a vote to seal the minutes of executive session.
Mm-hmm.
For second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we are convened in open session. We have consent agenda, and anyone like to take anything out of the consent agenda? Seeing that here, I will consider a motion to approve the consent agenda, direct motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Spotlight on excellence.
Hi, I was motion, Jana, second.
So I would like, thanks for doing that. So I'd like to make an announcement after this consent agenda. That this will be Calusentrick's last day, or I should say last night, as the school committee clerk. So it's not, we don't have to cry, no tears today, because she's going to be here to do her human resources and everything else that she does. So she is, she is taking this responsibility for all. So we have Ronald Floss with Calum. I think everyone knows how bad of an she is, and she's probably helped everyone in this room something at some point. So having said that, we're having Eddie Ford, it's our first day here, our first night. And I love to congratulate you. But she will be stepping in some very big shoes, Bill. And I spent just a little time with her, and I think she's going to be great. So anything we can do to help you, just so we know. So spotlight on excellence. So if you have an act within here?
The box.
Box.
This is our kid success. What box is, is it's a free before-school physical activity program aimed to get students moving in the morning and they're ready for a day of learning. There is lots of compelling evidence to support the fact that physical activity, particularly physical activity before the beginning of the academic year, is very important to children. This was an initiative that sprang from our wellness committee. We'll give you more about what went on in the wellness world last year a little bit later in this meeting. But box was something that we talked about, and we had a group of very dedicated parents that agreed to go and do an observation in box. That week they went to the socket to see the program. They were so invested that they decided to go out and become trainers. In June, June 4th of June, they did a couple of pilot sessions so that they could kind of get a feel for what it would be like and to see drum up some interest at Wilton Community School. And they launched the program, I believe it was September 23rd or 24th was that week. The program is running Tuesdays through Fridays before school from roughly 7:30 to 8:15. It includes, a typical session is a fun warm-up game or movement drill, a running activity or relay races, an obstacle course with some strength movements, some kind of a fun game like a rock-paper-scissors tag or crab soccer. Then they do a cool down with yoga or meditation. And they just, they give them some nutritional knowledge so that they know about how to fuel their bodies to be ready to learn all day long. It's really, it's a very structured program inasmuch as they do all those routines every session, but the kids have an awful lot of fun. And they're really charged up and energized and ready to start the day in a productive way. We welcome you to come in and observe any Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday that you'd like to. We have much, we have a higher moment with the younger kid population at this point. We're hoping to get some of our older kids involved or at least to work towards getting our older, younger kids to stay with the program going forward. But so far, it's been a very, very successful launch of the program. We're scheduled to go through December, but I have every reason to believe that we'll continue the program beyond that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I thank those parents who stand there.
This is President's report, a date on wellness update.
Okay, the district's wellness policy includes a director, superintendent, and the principal collaborates down on the annual wellness report. And we have that up here in the board, obviously the PD board does. And so it's a vibrant to the people. Several of us collaborated on, Jan Porter, Sonya Witt, Dronell Kirman, and HR, Carolyn Sutcliffe, as well as Julie Bell. So there's a lot of hands that are in this report because there were so many wellness-related activities, initiatives, and offerings this year. The wellness committee is a very vibrant committee. I think we have 15 or so.
How do they fit in the conference?
We need to move. And it is just, for me, I just love to listen and participate more as a member of the community than a school administrator. I've learned so much from nutritionists who sits on on the committee. So those meetings are focused and productive. Our nurse, she lives at Medical Dental Center, she offers a lot, a couple of food clinics. You missed a good one last week, so we have another November 15th. She offers dental screening for students, hearing screening for students, the vision screening for students is completed in collaboration with the Lions Club. They are amazing, they're sort of angels here on earth. She does scoliosis screening, what was that?
I forgot what it was.
Some new cell phone.
Yeah, sorry, got a call.
Presentations and wellness programming for students. We have a walking club that, aside from all the competitive sports after school, although still without saying, we have a walking club that is not competitive. Although, because she had a leaderboard last year, Dronell Kirman, the kids are psyched this year to be each other and be the former steps or miles.
They're siblings.
They're siblings. So we, you know, especially non-competitive, maybe put a leaderboard up. And swim safety workshop for elementary students, they're important being a coast of town. There was fire safety presentation, King Garden, Kinn County Garden, Taylor Cooten Foundation came for our upper school kiddos, grade seven and eight. And out.
Now you're taking this morning again?
Oh, this year's program.
Wonderful.
Just to throw that in. And Taylor Cooten is an athlete who sort of hooked on performance-enhancing beverages and other substances. So he's found this wonderful organization that pushes into schools for free, talks about healthy choices around food, around physical exercise, just wonderful. We have Newport girls come in, and they offered a presentation and some scholarships to their baseball camp. And they focused on healthy eating and making good choices. And I attended that, I can't tell you how wonderful it was to hear those wonderful fellow athletes talk about willing choices and bring them out onto field, girls and boys, just had a great time with our kids. It was wonderful, wonderful, marvelous. There's a highlight from our principal and Dronell Kirman, our PD teacher, on the walking club. We're getting some pictures of some of the kiddos. They love the little pyrometers and off they go. Some of them are running now, and they're going to walk in. We have quite a few nutrition-related programs this year. We have harvest lunch for the entire school community, that was last November. It's a lot of locally sourced vegetables. Acidic steam was purchased for the cafeteria with oil funds and local funds. And that has resulted in some fresh vegetables and fresh grains every day and wonderful, I want to just say, new additions to already decent selections in the cafeteria. Our pre-k kiddos and our kindergartners, every year, there'll be young family fawns that visit, who learn all about agriculture and healthy eating. The Trotwell's nutritionist visited this committee in June and offered a presentation on state regulations around food choices in schools and federal regulations. Nancy Roberts, she's also the architect of the wellness committee, and I find her a fantastic one for information, if only I could live by her particular enix about confidence. Calum and Mr. McMeay have implemented a new food service dashboard that expedites processing of applications from families for free and reduced lunch. And so that guarantees a quicker access to a hot, free, or reduced-priced meal for the kids. And we're looking to build out another dashboard through Trotwell's in the future to budget for it for next year, where parents can just apply online and no hard copy forms passing that network. So it's more discreet, and we have high participation, I'm sure. Staff wellness campaigns, breast cancer awareness, heart health, healthy holidays. Calum is always pushing out fun things and competitions and including snoozerooos, that was about sleep patterns. Maintain, don't gain, that was maintaining weight around holidays where everyone's tempted. A walking challenge, I did win third place, and I did participate, yes, for that. First place was Beth, my goodness, Mr. Tocot, she blew us all out of the water, no matter how much I did, she double-tripled it. And then Pocket Yoga Studio hosted free yoga sessions for staff in the spring. Glamping day, thank you PST. We had a wonderful glamping day that was just, it was just so, just celebrated the staff, so farming of all the hard work that the school teachers and sports staff put up every single day for kids. And it, wow, it turned the faculty playing room into a campground, and it was the biggest nug, I can't really imagine. And then we went into the courtyard and had all sorts of, it was just a lot of fun, thank you so much. So we have the, okay. One hundred percent of our staff, including most of ourselves, are CPR, ADD, and first aid. First time we took this school, and Sonja and Calum, what a great idea, and we'll keep that up. There's also a nutritionist workshop at staff PD day, and also information on staff management, professional development, once again CPR, first aid, and ADD. We also have Power of Our Words, Children in Trauma, Staff Wellness Presentation, and there's three separate staff development initiatives that we ran last year. It was the first time we did a homeschool one with for staff. And we had Power of Our Words last year, and Power of Words affects each other, how we affect children. And we had a children in trauma presentation on PD dates, and that was offered by Mary Susan Miller, Ray Moncote, and James Sundberg. And a staff wellness presentation. The Counter Prevention Coalition, our partner in wellness, thank you very much. Family Dinner Night, Hotter Purple, Tobacco-Free Vaping Presentation, and thank you for sponsoring the youth mental health first aid course. You will be getting a rebate for that because Bradley Hospital, last year, called and said we have extra money in the grant, and we'll not be charging you that $1,500 for that presentation. And that's the, see, we're sponsored $700. Am I right, or am I forgetting?
Yeah.
You did, didn't you? Okay, all right. So you will be all separated, right? We discussed that today. New friends. Thank you Bradley Hospital. It's not everyday hospital calls and says, this is free, it's on us, it's fun, extra money. It was a wonderful eight-hour program. I then just did, you know, a few little vignettes here, spotlight on social-emotional learning. Social-emotional learning has become, I would say, a front center at Wilton Community or the community of the most, that have heard of it. And this is just, you know, the narrative of some of our social-emotional program in Open Circle, Choose Love, which was implemented last year. Who am I, Anyway, Core Arts, Box, also, we said Rocks this time. And that was all part of the conversation last year at wellness meeting meetings. And some highlights.
Justice.
Restorative justice. Well, look at that, next year's wellness, restorative justice is coming for 100% of staff.
It was hard to put this together because there were so many things that.
We had the conversation stage last year. That really, that will be very vital for next year's report.
Yes.
So we already have.
Just excited.
Yeah.
I am too.
We already have fodder for next year's wellness report. Certainly, that's just a snapshot there. We also participated in the Lions Club Kindness Matters Contest, just a couple of.
Can I just add? It's really, it's really, all of those we're finding from current research is a springboard for academic learning. The correlations have been established. If you have malnourished procedures in place, if you have education for staff and families, if you have good nutrition, kids perform better in the classroom. So that's what this is about.
Thank you, that's wonderful. Eight-two, update on building renovation for us.
Okay. I did contact Martel Construction and Mike Montal to set this in time. So we are very lucky to have a contractor who did it on this, who has some Little Compton roots. Mike Montal does not live here, but he has roots in Little Compton, Georgia. And this is where we stand right now, subcontractors, the purchase orders have been issued to the subcontractors. Some of those shop drawings have been requested, and he anticipates those within a week. Those will dictate scheduling and lead times for installation of items. As we know, there will be longer lead times on some of the materials. And they're not at stand plans, Home Architect, and the building permit is in process. We did submit the schedule values to me and Mr. McMeay, and we submitted a log in the next 24, 48 hours for approval. So we did get the schedule values, I did submit a log separately. We're also, we just sent them the tax exempt information. And Mr. Montal does say that he looks forward to a student professional project, contacting him, any questions, work concerns. So so far, so good. As you know, we have submitted a request, I submitted it last week, for an extension live, and we have preliminary approval for that. We did have to include in that request that even if we leave, it will be substantially complete by December 31st. In my request, I did want that, we may not be, that's the only way to get that extension. So it looks good for us. And.
Questions, committee?
So they asked for March 3rd extension. We have preliminary approval for that, but no reasons for we won't get it. Mr. Montal feels the certain materials are hard to come by and require that probably be tried not with standing. It's a small job, but you can run this program in time.
John, you have anything to add?
I think the, although the extension has been submitted, we would probably gain compliance with the janitorial grant. We have that pretty much.
All the way out in Congress.
And we'll be able to submit those reports and complete the portion of the progress.
Questions from the committee on that? All right, thank you. Finance report, John?
Warmed up a little bit, Jack, I had roughly. We have completed roughly about one month of this school year. And really, the only thing that got me in the POs for supplies and some teacher payroll, we haven't got any of the invoices in for the high school tuition and some of the special education. How to just do the CQ tuition. So what you have is really just kind of a refresher on where the budget is at this point in time. Right now, the president, we're having an issue. As the invoices have come in, those are the areas that will have the issues in, which is the district tuition and for the foster. So I'll figure out there. As far as FY '19, we pretty much closed the book on that. The order is in a couple of weeks to wrap up their work, anticipating the budget adjustments. And so they should complete their work by the end of October, and issue the nature statements by the end of December, I think we'll do. And the budget board, I've contacted our budget board to start the process for FY '21. I guess they're assigning individuals on the budget board to serve the partners. I think I had them assigned to the school department. He emailed me last evening, we're supposed to touch base today, but he never, he never called, so I'll get touch with him. I think they're going to be looking at like five years of history that they want, which is easy enough to provide them. So I think we're looking at a certain trend. So I think they're going to take a movement that's been about a long time in the past. But I think we should still be in good shape. FY '21.
Questions? Thank you, John. Committee reports. Caucus School Committee, I think that you missed this one, am I right?
I was there last night.
All right, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was there last night, that's okay, Patrick. There are exciting things going on in Portsmouth. There was recognition to the contributions of the committee that made the auditorium improvements. So have you seen it?
I have not seen it, have you?
Yes, yes, very nice. So they acknowledged the committee that worked to put that together and have it open for the school year. But I think the real news, and you may have read about this perhaps in the Sephora Times or heard about it, that Portsmouth and Newport got together in a collaborative meeting to discuss what it might be like to form a collaborative on the Quinny Valley. There were no decisions made, however, there will be more conversations. So we should kind of stand by and see what happens next.
So Tom Recreation Committee report, I do have the report that Recreation Committee recorded, that they report to the town and the recommendations from town. And they recommended to the town that the goals on the multipurpose field were potentially dangerous and a safety issue. So the town council has written the document to me, I'll read it, says, I visited, this is Tony Texer, the town administrator. You visit the side of field to inspect the goalposts due to some raised concerns of their condition. His observations are that they could still be used as spare set, some repairs are done, new wheels, new brackets, and some welding. Or new brackets to reattach the bottom supporting bar. His recommendations are purchase a new set that would be stronger and easier to move around. So just for a matter of protocol, it goes from the Recreation Committee to the town council, and the town council has now responded to it to the, to the school. So that'll be in your hands to. Ten-three.
I'm discussing with Mr. Montal.
So ten-three, help the wellness committee?
I think we're good on that.
You're good, that was a good one. Policy Subcommittee shall be late?
Happy to.
All right, I'll wait to Subcommittee report.
They were on campus a few weeks ago, and they did work in Oasis. And Polling, would you like to speak today?
No. I don't want to hear from the first looking here. Oh, could you do the, because there. There had been a lot of kids digging out of the Oasis for various purposes. But probably the single most exciting thing that happened was last year, Carla Woodhouse planted potatoes and other vegetables with some of the pre-k and kindergarten students. And she took them back in maybe two weeks ago, not too long ago. And they got to harvest what they planted in the spring. And they actually ended up with 20, I think it was 22 pounds of potatoes. They were running them back out to the nurse's office to carry it. But it was 22 pounds to four of them to carry it.
Thank you.
The reason why I let this call in because her kids are about publicly.
I avoid my kids reporting out for me.
Thank you. School State Subcommittee report, there's something to report this morning. Discussion items, shared services agreement. We'll go to the superintendent again for this. This comes up yearly after we've created the document. And just to kind of fill in backfill, yourself, the town, the building, the IT, Jonathan, and the highway inspector. All that is wrapped into a shared service. So what this committee did last year was to put down duties and make sure that the school and the town collaborated and everyone's happy with the agreement. So it's been a year. So is everyone happy with the agreement? Or do you need to set up some meetings to get us that answer?
Well, I love the agreement.
Love the agreement.
And not as stiff.
Do you just do agreement?
I love the concept of agreement. It's such an efficiency when a small town can share services and leverage human resources. So that said, I have started meeting with the school side employees impacted by this agreement. I met with Arquette Custodian today, who is referenced in here under Part Two, Senior Custodian of Wilton Community School. I met with our IT director today as well. We went over, we refined some of the language. I've reached out to Bill Moore, our maintenance director, with some issues and concerns. Next, I will reach out to the two chiefs, as I did last year, for your feedback on their view of the shared services agreement as regards the IT director. And I will also meet with Mr. Marsh and Mr. Texer to discuss changes that I would like to see in the board.
Great, so we'll expect some more detail next month.
Yes, you can expect that.
Thanks, thank you. There's no objections, I'd like to move 11-3 up and 11-2. Any objections to that? November 2019 meeting day, is anyone on the committee who'd like to change it to November 6? That's November 6, right? Is that the day? Is that okay with you, Jana?
Yes.
Rita?
Yes.
Polly? S? Okay, thank you. 11-2, I'll curriculum, I will go to the superintendent.
Yeah, it's just serendipity that I received a letter today from a consultant here to Ms. Wick. Our health and PD for the one class not been up yet even a bit. And the principal has shared her, not concerns, but she would like to have the authority to move forward with hiring consultant to work with Ms. Kirman with Mr. Ford. Also has done an upgrading on health and P D curriculum. A few stakeholders have also contacted me too in particular regarding upgrades to the PD and health program that they would like to see. It is an area that has been, had to use some reductive. It's an unassessed area, so obviously with the role of the park and the Y-CAS, EIA, SOCC, and the next generation science standards and the next generation science assessment, it is a critical area that has been worked. Because the assessed areas basically consume most of our time and energy when it comes to critical construction and assessment.
All right, any comments on the other committee?
There are particulars in the wellness policy about health and PD and state requirements that could be used in reference.
Excellent. Please share those.
Anyone else on the council?
Two questions. First, who would be the additional stakeholders? And secondly, is there a cost, what would be the cost associated with that?
That would come under title to professional development, so that would be federal funds, that's how the stakeholders, yeah. And a community member, obviously, for health and P D. Stakeholders, yeah, and a community member who's a former health and PD teacher. But this caught my attention.
I had some rumors over the sex part of our health curriculum. Some high school students had brought their concerns to my attention and I looked into further, I felt like we weren't preparing our students for high school and life. And when I mentioned it, it seemed like we could update the entire curriculum, not just that portion.
I did see that, I did look at the Department of Education, our comprehensive health instruction outcomes and some of them were not helping. Principal Whip did concur that it has been a concern over the past years, it needs to be improved. Like I said, math, science, or math have taken over our high school, so some of these critical areas do get marginalized.
And some of the health-based education doesn't necessarily completely fall within the realm of PD and health, but it falls within our social emotional learning components. So we just need to make sure that there's no gaps with respect to things like bathing and things like that, with how that big concerns would be when the performance originally. So we just make, we need to make sure that we're hitting all of the topics and mandates that have come along the past couple of years. We are doing many of that, but I just want to make sure there's nothing glaring that wouldn't say.
We have a wonderful program, but it needs to be weathered, some of the issues.
Questions on that? Thank you. Public input, any public input today from any of the public? As you know, you just raised your hand, John. Action items thirteen one, consider discussing vote on a box on policy. This is the second read, Ed.
We want the policy to comply with what the state mandates by the financial milligram dosage to four milligrams. I think it reads fine. That was a change.
Have a motion?
Someone?
For a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Thirteen two, consider discussing vote on field trip policy. This is a first read, so there'd be no vote. Ed?
The field trip policy was amended to reflect that we have a helping hands fund for those who are having financial difficulties or are unable to pay for a field trip.
Says it right up there, helping hands fund. Any questions on that one? Thirteen three, consider discussing vote on nondiscrimination policy, again, first read, Ed.
This was to, we did not have a title on resource officer who was identified, this identifies Carolyn Cedrick as being a title on, or a member of any of us that are complying with that requirement.
Questions on that? Thirteen four, consider discuss our crisis response policy. This is a first read, and if you'd like to say we're going to skip thirteen five because the threat assessment policy is in the crisis response policy, how policy is it?
Okay, the threat assessment policy is in the crisis response policy, therefore there is only one policy, it is different in title. We had to explicate the threat assessment team and we incorporated it into the existing crisis response policy. And so that one policy will address that.
We'll expect to see those on the number six for a vote. Thirteen six, consider discussing, thank you, Ed, and Polly. Consider discussing vote to dispose of field hockey nets, superintendent?
I will look into regulations around deaccession of those field hockey nets. We just can't give them away because they're not working for us and we all have a program that's legally liable. Also, they were given to us, donated, secondly. So I have been working with meetings and consulting with deaccession and finding a way to dispose of them.
Thank you. Any questions on that one?
Couldn't we just take them to the dump? If we can't give them, we can't sell them, we don't really have any.
They're not prepared to go anywhere.
So we're going to vote on this. Would you like to amend the, what's on the agenda, to take them to the dump?
Yes.
I'd like to do a...
See a original discussion, Ed?
Yes.
Okay. I consider a motion to dispose of field hockey nets, so I have one. Second?
Second.
Any further discussion on this issue? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Not seeing any, thank you, Ed. Fifteen seven, consider discussing vote to approve requests of replacement administration and a legal counsel, anyone? Chance, thank you. Thirteen eight, consider discussing vote to approve amended school committee secretary contract, have a motion for a second?
Second.
Do I need clarification? Any questions from the committee? Do I have a motion?
They have a motion, they have a second.
I know, I know. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Not seeing any. Consider a vote to adjourn. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.